At this time, I would like to call the August 2, 2022 Stanley County Board of Education Meeting to Order. Welcome to those of you here in attendance and to those that may be joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here and your support of Stanley County Schools. Before I go any further, the flowers on the dais are in memory of two of our Stanley County students that we recently lost. Amontee Lindsay from East Albemarle, Braxton Crouch from Stanfield Elementary. If you will, please continue to keep these families in your prayers. At this time, let us pray. Dear God, thank you for your love and for the many blessings that you bestow upon us each day. As the excitement of a new school year grows, I ask you to bless our students and families, our teachers and staff. Open our eyes, our hearts and our minds to new challenges and wonderful opportunities that the start of a new school year brings. Cover not only our schools, but every school across this great nation with your protection. Guide us now as we enter into our meeting with wisdom and respect. In your name we pray, amen. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, Board members, I would like to ask for a motion to enter into closed session for Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A6; Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A1; Attorney/Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A3. May I have a motion?
I make a motion, we go into closed session.
A motion by Mr. Graves, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Watson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, the Board is now in closed session. At this time, I would like to call our Board back into open session. Once again, welcome to those of you that are in attendance, those who may be joining us via live stream. We appreciate you being here. And because there's more that have come in since the opening part of our meeting, I just want to draw your attention one more time. The flowers that are on the dais are in memory of two of our Stanley County students that we recently lost. Amontee Lindsay from East Albemarle and Braxton Crouch from Stanfield. If you will, if you will just please continue to keep these families in your prayers. Next on the agenda is a recognition. We have a very special recognition at this time. Dr. Dennis, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. We would like to recognize one of our alumni tonight, Mr. Caleb Wilson. Caleb, you want to come up here, Mom and Dad? So Caleb earned three silver medals at the 2022 Special Olympics USA Games. The National Special Olympics recently wrapped up its national champion competition, excuse me, with one Stanley County athlete, Mr. Wilson, walking away with the medals. He's a former West Stanley High School swimmer. He earned the three medals in the Games in Orlando, and he swam in 50-yard freestyle and backstroke events along with a relay team from North Carolina. He started competing in 2015 and reached the state competition every year, and is one of eight swimmers representing North Carolina. He practices three to four times a week to get ready for the national competition. Now, his swim coach, Mr. Mark Rolls, could not be here. He had some family obligations, but he did send me a letter I'd like to read to Caleb. He said, "Thank you Stanley County School Board, Dr. Dennis, an honored guest, for the opportunity to address you through this letter on this special occasion. I taught and coached for 28-plus years at West Stanley High. My students are all over the world doing all sorts of things. They are engineers, missionaries, teachers, doctors, lawyers, welders, equipment operators, parents, teachers, and even a school superintendent. Only one person I've taught or coached is an Olympian, and that is you, Caleb Wilson. I looked up the characteristics of Olympians. They all describe you perfectly. The things the words do not describe are the things that make you an Special Olympian. Over the years, as a swimmer and then as a coach of the West Stanley Swim Team, you showed and taught us determination. You never gave up. You showed us all how to be confident and to do things many would not attempt, like swimming butterfly, dancing when you felt the urge, and not getting scared when you had to swim the anchor for the relay. That was awesome. Best race ever, except for the Olympics, of course. You showed us how to push on by showing up every day, ready to go, and do your best. You taught us sportsmanship by cheering the loudest forever swimmer no matter what. You show us how to let go of disappointment by reacting to a bad race the same as you do a good race, with high fives for all. And you showed us how to love one another as you always treated everyone the same, no matter how they treated you." The list could go on, but just like a swimming race, time is ending. Caleb Wilson, three-time silver medalist, 2022 Special Olympic USA Games. That has a good sound to it. I like it, and I'm so proud of you. Congratulations on all of your accomplishments, and I'm looking forward to the future and seeing what you have for us next. Time waits for no one. Make every day a great one, or not. The choice is yours, and I know you would choose great. That's what Olympians do. Sincerely, Mark Rolls. So Caleb, well, first of all, Mom and Dad, would you like to say anything?
Well, if I may, his Special Olympics swim coach is sitting right there.
Oh, okay, come on up.
He had two pictures, it was Joel and Mr. Rolls. He knows a lot more about the selection process.
Would you like to speak to him, please?
I'm good.
Okay.
I think he gets all the credit.
All right. Well, Caleb, I have a certificate of achievement for you from Stanley County Schools, and the certificate is proudly presented of Caleb Wilson on his accomplishments during the 2022 Special Olympics USA Games. Congratulations, buddy. Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations from the Board of Education and myself. It's a major accomplishment.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Now, Mr. Laster, are you sure you don't want to say anything throughout all his swimming career? Thank you for coaching him. Thank you for what you've done. Caleb, we are so proud of you. You know, I don't know if COVID interfered with your swimming for a couple of years. I figure that it did, like everything else, but it's just amazing for us to have a Special Olympian here from Stanley County Schools. We're very proud. Board members, I'm going to give you about a five or 10-minute recess here so that we can go down there and congratulate Caleb, his family, his coach. And afterwards, if any of you, if you're not wanting to stay for the remainder of the meeting, certainly you are, are welcome to leave, but I'm going to call us into recess then for about five or 10 minutes. I would like to call us back into order. Next on the agenda is public comments. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at Board meetings each month, part of at least one regularly scheduled meeting, will be set aside for citizens to address the Board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total, except by majority vote of the Board. At this time, I have three people that have signed up for public comments, and again, I just ask you to be cognizant of the three-minute time. First person, Ms. Morgan Perez.
My son, Jackson, was in the first group of students to be part of the new and exciting dual-language immersion program located at Indy Elementary School. Kindergarten went great, then COVID happened. My son participated in remote learning for first grade. Last year, for second grade, we decided to send my son back to school so that he could continue in the dual-language program. The dual-language students were not offered a remote option like the rest of SCS. When COVID surged in January, I told the principal that I was worried about the safety of my son and my family. We made the decision to keep him home temporarily. As you know, the principal at Indy had me criminally charged with truancy. I want to clearly set the record straight about what happened next. The principal removed my son from the dual-language program at Indy and placed him in another school and notified me by mail. No advance warning, no discussion, no phone call, no meeting. The letter that the principal sent to the superintendent contained many false statements about my son, which certainly influenced the decision that was made. When questioned, the principal said that those statements were irrelevant. Any false statement concerning my son is relevant to me. Recently, the principal has denied my son reentry to his third-grade class based on his test scores. Other students enrolled in SCS can fail EOGs, fail multiple classes, and have excessive absences and still be passed on to the next grade level. Why is my son being treated differently than other students? My son took the Woodcock-Johnson Test of Achievement in March of this year. He scored at or above grade level in every area. Based on the test scores given by SCS, my son is below grade level. Why are there such conflicting results? I appealed the decision to deny my son reentry to his dual-language class to the School Board. It was denied. I requested a hearing before the School Board to review this decision. It was denied. I have requested a detailed explanation of the assessments and scoring. I am still waiting for that information. It is revealing and extremely disappointing that no one from SCS felt the need to intervene on behalf of a student and prevent him from being harmed and mistreated. This situation was handled in an unprofessional and discriminatory way. Principals are expected to prioritize student learning and success. Principals are expected to communicate effectively with families. The principal at Indy did not satisfy either of these expectations. The Indy principal should be required to explain thoroughly and directly to my son, Jackson, why he cannot rejoin his classmates in third grade. My son deserves an explanation and an apology from Jody Autry.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. The next person is, I hope I'm pronouncing right, Ms. Annette Starnes? I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
My name is Annette Starnes. At Board of Education Meetings, School Board members are seated in an elevated position. The audience should have a clear vision of you on the stage. We do not. Please reposition your computer screens or heighten your adjustable chairs. Our community needs to see you to know you. Your nameplates are annoyingly too small to read. The audience cannot tell who on the Board is speaking because some of your faces are hidden. I respectfully request that these issues be remedied immediately. Our tax is paid for the stage, and it should be used properly. Not being visible to the public is not only rude but embarrassing because it is obvious some of you do this deliberately. No excuse will be acceptable for you to continue to present yourselves in such an unprofessional and irritating manner. I appreciate the ones who do not conceal their faces. Anyone who speaks publicly before the Board of Education deserves a timely response. That is called being polite. Effective communication is vital. Our schoolchildren are our most precious resource. The education they receive will determine their future and ours. There is an ongoing situation here that is harming a child. This child has done nothing wrong, yet he has been expelled from his school. This situation has been publicized, and all School Board members should be well aware of it. A principal made a mistake in January that damaged a child. The second-grade dual-language teacher joined the mistake. The social worker joined the mistake. The superintendent and others joined the mistake. Stanley County Schools has been unwilling to admit and correct this mistake. Not one School Board member has intervened on behalf of the child. Instead, it seems as though most of you are supporting the mistake. This inability and non-action by the school leadership is pitiful and reprehensible. Imagine if it was your child. This child is suffering abuse from our school system each day since January. This abusive situation will continue to grow if left unresolved. This child is old enough to know the feeling of discrimination. You need to fix this and fix it now. What is the duty of a School Board member? It is to serve and protect our schoolchildren. I truly hope some of these heartfelt words will benefit you and our community. Thank you for your time, your attention, and hopefully your upcoming actions.
Thank you, Ms. Starnes. Our next speaker is Sheriff Crisco.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, fellow Board members. I'll try to be brief, just a couple of things that I wanted to touch on. One, I'd like to recognize Ms. Jennifer Flo with the continuing partnership that we have working with her, her being a safety officer, and our liaison between us and the school system to ensure our children's safety is of the utmost importance. Second, I want to thank each of y'all. COVID, before COVID, we had started our active shooter training in the high schools. COVID hit, that put a damper on it. In lieu of the most recent shootings that have taken in Uvalde, I want to thank you for allowing us back in the schools because we started Monday with active shooter training again. We're going to continue it for the next three Mondays in a row. Lastly, with the Uvalde shooting, in my world, elementary schools, we consider those soft With that being said, on behalf of the Sheriff's Office, we are going to purchase four more of the mobile, oh, body scanners that y'all use at, you know, sporting events. We are going to purchase four more. We've already ordered them, and as soon as they're in, I'll get in touch with Ms. Flo and make sure they're put in the schools. But that's all I have tonight.
Sheriff Crisco, we certainly appreciate you, your department, Ms. Jennifer Flo, our SOR officers. We are, we are all concerned up here, and it is a top priority of ours, every single Board member, I can tell you that. So anything that you're putting in place, any resource that you find out there, we value that, and thank you so much. Next on our agenda, Board members, you have had time to look over the minutes from the June 30 Special Called Meeting. If there are no corrections, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we approve.
A motion by Mr. Graves to approve the consent agenda, a second?
Second.
And that was by Ms. Poplin, okay? Any discussion, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Okay, the consent agenda has been approved. Next on the agenda, we have committee reports. Facilities, Dr. Leffler.
Our last facility meeting was July the 21st, and Carla Poplin, Dustin Lisca, and myself attended. We had quite a bit of discussion. George Crooker from the YMCA was wanting to find out about sharing some of our athletic facilities for Y events, and Dr. Dennis is going to work with him and try to arrange something. We're not going to interfere with our programs. We want to see if we can assist them and they can assist us, so Dr. Dennis is going to work with Mr. Crooker. We also discussed with our facilities, South Stanley High School is going to have a track resurfacing, fencing at Locust, and roof and chiller at Norwood. That's going to be done. That's on the schedule. Albemarle High School is on the list for resurfacing, and that'll be in the future. We also talked about our facilities. We just applied for a grant where the lottery profits. Several districts in our state received funds for some new buildings and some renovations. We applied for some, but we didn't get any this time. Last week, there was a 45-minute webinar about how they had changed the rules and how you apply for this, so we're going to apply this year and hopefully get some of the funds to kind of update our facilities. What we're talking about is some additions at West Stanley Middle School, Indy, East Albemarle, and upgrade West Stanley High School. This could be done with a loan of about $20 million. Also, we discussed like a 10- to 20-year plan because nothing's really been done for our buildings for about 50 or 60 years. After much discussion, we decided that we're going to look at some options, and Mr. Bowers is looking into them with some architects. We're thinking about possibly two high schools in the county because at this time, we just don't have equal academic, athletic clubs and stuff in all our schools, and we hope to get more broad representation of all those in our school system. And that's going to be the work we're going to be doing over the next several months. For this to happen, we'll have to go before the commissioners, county commissioners, and for it to be funded, we'd have to have a bond passed in the county. So Mr. Bowers is going to get all this information so we can look into this. Nothing's being decided, but we're just looking into it over the next 10 to 20 years to kind of see what we can do for our school system and our students in our school system. And that was the end of the report. It was a very productive meeting, and we discussed a lot of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leffler. I know that Mr. Lis could not be with us tonight. I do not think he has a report for finance. Instructional program, Mr. Sorenson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on July 20th, and actually, Dr. Amy Blake is going to talk about most of the things we went over at that meeting. Carla Poplin, Rufus Leffler, myself, Dr. Dennis, and I defer to Dr. Amy Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Marketing, community engagement, safety, Ms. Carla Poplin.
I don't really have, we haven't had a meeting. I don't really have a formal report, but I do know that Ms. Flo is going to have some additional information and things for us on this Friday, so that's all.
Thank you. Personnel, Ms. Watson?
No report.
And policy, Ms. Carla Poplin.
Yeah, I have a big, long list again. I don't get a pass this time. We met on July 20th and made our way halfway through the packet, so policies for final approval tonight will be Policy 6322, student assignment to buses, 7300, staff responsibilities, 3227-7322, webpage development, 3228-7323, use of personal technology to conduct school business, 3230-7330, copyright compliance, 7335, employee use of social media, 7336, unethical influence, 7340, employee dress and appearance, 5071/7351, electronically stored information retention, new policy 7360/8225, crowdfunding on behalf of the school system, policy 7400, job descriptions, policy 7405, extracurricular and non-instructional duties, 7410, teacher contracts, 7420, superintendent contract, new policy 7422, deputy associate superintendent contracts, 7425, school administrator contracts, 7440, assignments, reassignments, transfers, 2302, remote participation in Board meetings, and 2310, public participation at Board meetings. And so those are for final approval tonight, and then I have a list for rescinded after.
So she's, Ms. Poplin's read over the policies for final approval. I'm going to ask, before we make a motion, if Board member doesn't mind, I would like to pull the new policy 7360-8225, crowdfunding on behalf of the school system. If I could, Dr. Dennis, Ms. Poplin, if we could add this maybe on our work session, I would like to have a little discussion about this policy, please.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Motion just excluding that one?
Yes. So a motion then to approve the policies excluding 7360-8225. Could I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the policies.
I make a motion, we approve the policies with the exception of 7360 and 8225.
I have a motion by Mr. Graves, a second. Second by Ms. Watson, all in favor, or in discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, these policies have been approved.
Now I just have a list of rescinded policies. So 3189-B, electronic devices employees as applicable, 5015, assignment of personnel is applicable, 5020, job descriptions, 5020-A, electronic mail retention policy, 5036, code of ethics, standards of conduct and staff responsibilities, 5040, unethical influence as applicable, 5060-A, guidelines for maintaining professional staff, student boundaries as applicable, 5225, employee dress code and appearance, 5305, retention and promotion as applicable, 5310, contracts for teachers, 5325, meetings as applicable, 5340, extracurricular and non-instructional duties, 5350, voluntary transfer, 5355, involuntary transfer, 5375, temporary assignments as applicable, 5515, assignment, 5600, school administrator contracts, 7100, recruitment and selection of personnel, 8000, webpage development, 8003, copyright compliance, and 8035, employee use of social media are all to be rescinded.
Okay, so I need.
I just wanna make sure everybody knows in the audience, it's not that they don't still exist, they're usually folded into other policies. It's not like.
Or either it's a new policy's been created in its place.
Okay, so board members, I just need a motion to approve the policies that are being rescinded.
I make a motion that we approve rescinding the policies.
A motion by Mr. Graves, a second. Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Okay, these policies have been approved to be rescinded.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Next on our agenda is curriculum and instruction. I will turn this over to you, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I do have one item that is on the agenda and then I will address the information from Mr. Sorenson. In your packet, you will see a document that is entitled "Federal Consolidated Programs." This is an annual approval process that we go through with you as our board to keep you apprised of how we are utilizing federal dollars that are appropriated to us for Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. Title I, of course, is probably the most well-known. That is our programs to improve basic programming. That is from the federal government and it is based upon our number of free and reduced students here in the district. And so you see that every year we're required to set goals within the performance of those schools that are identified Title I. We target K-5 schools, but we also set a threshold of targeting any school that is above 75% free and reduced lunch. At this time, that includes Albemarle Middle School. So all of our elementary schools and then Albemarle Middle School are included. We anticipate including Albemarle High School next year. You can also see the amounts that are designated there. Are there any questions about Title I? The next funding source is Title II. Title II is designed to support effective instruction. It's often used to support professional development of teachers. It is also used to support beginning teacher induction programs and also to support teachers in taking additional praxis exams to secure additional certifications on their license. We are currently planning to use it to actually hire a beginning teacher coordinator within the district. It's been a while since we've had someone in that role. We have been contracting that out for some time, but we'll be utilizing these funds to actually hire someone in-house. We also use this to pay stipends to our mentor teachers. Those are veteran teachers who are mentoring our new teachers to the county and to the field. And then we also have our partnership with Pfeiffer University where we're going through a cohort process to train teachers to be certified in AIG. And then we also offer reimbursement to teachers to add on certification for areas that are hard to fill, particularly with our middle school. For Title III, that is our English.
I have a question about Title II real quick.
Yes, yes, sir, please.
What, what's the, the role of that individual you were saying we were gonna hire?
A beginning teacher coordinator or an induction specialist. They will work primarily with our beginning teachers that come into the district. They'll coordinate professional development, monthly meetings. They'll also coordinate the mentors who work with those teachers to, to mentor them as part of that onboarding process. Title III is English language acquisition. You can see that that is a fairly small pot of money. But we do utilize that, or we have in the past and plan to continue, to utilize that to hire two part-time EL assistants. Those have been placed in our areas of greatest need, which includes Central Elementary and Stanfield Elementary. So we're waiting to make sure that we have enough money to continue to do that. That would be a part-time teacher assistant position. And then our Title IV is for student support and academic enrichment. We are required to support three different areas here. The first one is well-rounded educational programs. The second is for safe and healthy students. And the third area is to support the effective use of technology. So our plans for this source of money this coming year are to continue to provide a part-time literacy facilitator in the dual-language immersion program, to continue our partnership with the YMCA for the Learn to Swim for all of our second graders, and then to provide professional development for teachers on how to engage students in the learning process through technology. So this does require action from the board, so I would entertain a vote at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, for explaining all of that to us. I think each board member has had an opportunity to read through this for yourself. May I entertain a motion to approve the consolidated federal program as presented?
I move, we, we accept the consolidated federal program as presented.
Okay, I have a, a motion by Mr. Sorenson, a second. Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. This motion has passed. Thank you, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis.
Thank you so much. The next piece at Mr. Sorenson's request, I would like to just highlight some of the conversations from our instructional committee meeting from July the 20th. There were a few items on the agenda from Ms. Pennington. They do cross over into that realm of student services. And I do believe that, Mr. Sorenson, we decided to ask for additional time to discuss this outside of the instructional committee. But the first thing is a universal screener for student emotional well-being. We currently use a screener at our schools that are part of the Restore Grant called the DESA Screener. It is a very expensive screener, but there are some less expensive options and even some free options that would help us to be situated to better address the emotional needs of our students. So we would like to maybe plan some time, and if it's not too late to add it to that board work session on Friday, we could certainly look at maybe addressing it then. One of the things that we did talk about was attendance policy. We noticed that in the revision to board policy concerning student attendance, that there used to be a caveat regarding attendance at high school and having to meet a certain percentage of number of days in attendance. And so we noticed that that has disappeared from the revised policy. And so we would like some discussion about adding that back. So I know that'll probably need to go through the policy committee. I shared a bit about the Connections Block that we're instituting at the middle and high school level for this coming year. Again, that's just a way for us to keep a pulse on how our students are doing emotionally and academically. It's designed to be 30 to 45 minutes per day. Fridays will be utilized for enrichment activities like clubs and special meeting events with guest speakers. Monday through Thursday, students will be assigned to groups based on their needs. So our students who are not yet proficient readers may be assigned to a corrective reading or an extreme reading group. Our students who are needing to get ready for college, they'll go through some coursework on college readiness. And then for our middle schoolers who are just needing that little extra boost to get ready for high school, we have a course designed for them ready for high school. So we're anticipating some great things from implementing this Connections Block. We have met extensively with our middle and high school principals to make sure that this works for them and that it fits into the schedule. And what you'll notice is that every middle school and every high school will have this block in their schedule moving into next year, which will make it possible for the curriculum and instruction team to kinda coordinate how we go out and support this effort in our buildings. We also talked briefly about some of our contracts for special products that we are no longer be using. We looked at the data, we pulled usage reports, and we also pulled student performance reports and found that we were not getting the bang for our dollar out of some of these programs. And so we have not renewed the contract for some of these services. Just trying to be good stewards of the money that we've been entrusted with and making sure that it is meeting our students' needs. We are very conscious to make sure that we are continuing to search for products that will support the learning, but also be those products that we know have a research and evidence-based foundation so that we are getting good products that we're putting in the hands of our teachers. Mr. Sorenson, anything else you would like for me to touch on?
Oh, thank you. I would like to say one thing about the software contracts and stuff. If money was not an object, everybody would have everything they want. Money is very much an object.
Correct.
Anybody that's worked with the schools for any amount of time at all knows that some of that software is extremely expensive. Dr. Amy Blake went and took a snapshot of how things are being used, how much time is being invested, and then how the return on our test scores is. And I want to applaud you for doing that. You gave me the data I needed to say, yeah, that's what we wanna do, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, board. Oh, yes, sir, Mr. Graves.
I have a quick question. The Connections Block, so this is something that, that you're gonna move forward with?
Yes, sir.
As far as the plan here. So what about students that are doing well in class? Is there like a threshold? And is there a separate set of instruction that those students, or what happens in that case?
Yes, sir. We have been able to differentiate the students by where their needs are. So what you'll notice, if you come into a middle school, you may see students who are struggling readers. We know that we have a population of students who are at least two grade levels behind in their reading scores and/or their math scores. And so those students will be clustered and assigned to teachers who will focus on what they need is in terms of that reading or that math. We may have students who are on grade level who may just need to have some time exploring careers or maybe starting to think more about their high school options. And so we have a Ready for High School program that we're gonna be using with them. When we get to our high school-level students, our 9, 10, 11, and 12, same process. Those students who are still behind in reading will be assigned to one of those reading groups or a math group. And then those who are needing that little push to get ready for college, there's a program that we're going to use called Ready for College that they will be using as well. But it will be highly differentiated to meet the needs of students.
So what about students who aren't struggling with English or math and don't need a boost?
There will be daily topics of conversation that will be part of that curriculum that is used. So teachers will be, have been surveyed, actually, to ascertain where they want to spend their time. So teachers who may normally teach AIG may say, you know, I really wanna work with those students who need extra help. And they'll be assigned to that group. Those students who kinda fall right in the middle, they'll get some time to maybe explore careers or they'll maybe have some time to dig into a novel study, things that the normal classroom setting may not allow the time for, but they'll have the time to do it here. We're also looking at weaving in some special projects with one of our partners, Dr. Brian Johnson, who has been one of our partners in the Northern End. But we're looking at partnering with him to do some great things in our middle school as well around behavioral health and helping students to learn how to function on that executive level and regulate emotions and things of that nature.
And the last question is, this, this is not scheduled around lunches. Is that correct?
No, sir.
Okay, alright.
No, sir, it is not scheduled around lunches. It's not connected to lunches in any way. And in fact, most of our schools, I believe, have the Connections Block starting off the day. Maybe at the high school level, I think it starts off the day. At the middle school level, it is built into either an English or a math block, but is at standard time from school to school and throughout our district.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Amy Blake Lewis.
Yes, ma'am.
In response also to Mr. Graves, I've been a part of something very similar to this. And it, when it's done correctly, you know, and you get all your.
Yes, ma'am.
moving pieces together. It's, it's very beneficial like for all, you know, for all students. I was just gonna say, you know, I know many times we have our tutors, it seems like, for our elementary. But you know, I could almost see here, you know, if we could use tutors or some type of volunteers when you're talking about small group work, even in a middle school and a high school setting. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Absolutely, and the beauty of this Connections Block, and I know that your background is middle school as mine is, you know, you think of it as that advisor, advisee block of time. So every teacher in the building will actually have a Connections Block. So your PE teacher, a CTE teacher, you know, everybody in that building will have a Connections Block, which means that these class sizes will be smaller than the normal content area classroom. And so our hope is that those students make a relationship connection with that adult in the building, that they have a go-to person that they can ask questions of or maybe say, hey, I'm struggling in this, can you point me to some assistance? So definitely, there, there are a lot of possibilities for this structure and we're very glad that we've been able to get it up and running this year. We had hoped to do it last year, but with that transition back from COVID, it was just a bit too much for our teachers to lift at that moment. But we feel that the time is definitely right this year, and so we're moving forward with it this year.
Thank you. I know you've got some board members sitting up here that, you know, we certainly, if we had time on a Friday when this is taking.
Absolutely.
To work with a, a small group of students or something, I, I know that, you know, we, we would do that.
That would be wonderful.
As board members, we need to do that.
Absolutely. Let me know your availability and we will plug you in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is auxiliary services. I will turn this over to you, Dr. Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing I have is the 2022-23 Stanley County Schools Fees. By policy, you have to approve these fees before the beginning of the school year. So I have them presented for you. We just compiled these from all the different principals. If you have any questions, let me know. The one thing I would like to add that's not on there is also by policy, you have to set the, you have to set the, what am I trying to say? I've lost my words. The tuition for the year, excuse me. So every year, the tuition may change based on the ADM and the appropriation from the county. This year, it is gonna go up a little bit based on what our, what they think our allotment's gonna be as far as the state goes, which is 8377 and our total appropriation from the county, which is $14,196,743. So if you do that calculation, the per pupil appropriation for this coming year will be $1,613.82. And the reason you do this is because when you have out-of-county students, like students from different LEAs that come in, say someone comes over from Montgomery County, the per pupil appropriation for Montgomery County does not follow the student. So that takes into account what the Stanley County taxpayers were to pay to educate that student. Any questions on the fees?
I have a quick question on that. So if, if we were to not charge for, because we did for a period of time not charge out-of-county transfers, a tuition fee, that comes out of the regular budget. We're not going back to the county commissioners and asking for a supplemental increase, are we?
No, that would come out of general fund.
Right, and do we know what the approximate number of, of transfers is from out-of-county?
Year. The last, the last year or the year before?
I really don't have that number. I did do the tally of, because I had to do the tally of charter school students, but I'll be glad, I can email you that number later. A lot of ours come from Montgomery and Anson County. And the surrounding counties where people may work in, in the county and wanna bring their kids in. But I don't mind giving you that number. I don't have the exact number on hand.
And, uh, Dr. Dennis, up here, where are you done? Anthony, okay. There's some of these that take to be determined. Is that gonna?
Some of them, like.
From, you don't know what you're gonna get into till you get into it. So what I will do is when we actually get that number, I will bring that number back to you. So it probably should've just been left off and brought back at a later time.
Chairman Gibson, I would just request, if we could, if we're gonna vote on this, I'd like to break out the portion, the fee for the out-of-county tuition, if we could.
Yeah, he's, he's right. He should vote on that because it's too different.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on all the, the other school fees and then vote on out-of-county fees separately.
That's good.
So may I have a motion then to vote on the Stanley County School Fees for 2022, 2023, all except the out-of-county fees?
all except the out-of-county fees?
I make a motion that we accept the Stanley County School fees for 2020, 2022, 2023 as on this document.
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Watson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Okay, this 2022-23 fee schedule has been approved. Now you want us to vote on the out-of-county. So I need a motion to vote on the out-of-county fee schedule. Okay. All right, a motion by Ms. Watson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Poplin. All in favor say, or any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this has passed. To accept the out-of-county fee. Next, Dr. Dennis, I think you have something else with capital expenditure.
Yeah, so what I have is, we did, we're redoing Stanley, South Stanley's track, like was mentioned earlier. However, what we were, the initial number, we thought were not the initial, was not what it's going to cost. And of course, this is due to inflation and things like that. So you have in here two proposals, one from a mayor court, which is one hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. You have one from Court One, which ended up being one hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-six. And we would want to go with, obviously, the lowest proposal that gives us the same, gives us the same kind of work. But I will need approval by the Board since the increase from what it was budgeted has been, is over ten percent.
Okay, so board members, my understanding then is that Court One will give us the same amount of what we're asking for with the track surfacing at a cheaper cost. So I would like a motion from the Board to go with the Court One proposal for the South Stanley High School track resurfacing.
It's the green page.
It's the green, it's the green-colored page. I think this one came in at one thirty-six thousand.
One thirty-seven, one ninety-six.
One thirty-seven. So I have asked for a motion to...
I make a motion, we approve the increased expenditure of one thirty-seven. We take the lower of the two quotes.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Graves. Second, a second by Ms. Poplin. Any further discussion?
I do have a quick question on that under discussion, and that is, I'm assuming that all of these individuals that are quoting are bonded and licensed and all that, but are there any performance guarantees as part of these contracts? Do you know?
There's guarantee, it's not like lifetime, but there's guarantees according to, there's a manufacturer's guarantee and warranty on the workmanship. Four-one guarantees any failures due to poor workmanship, shabby rent, and no cost to owner, and then the period to be set guaranteed not to cover vandalism, acts of God, misuse, and we have to carry fire, tornado, another liability insurance pertinent. It's all under the general conditions of.
Right, I just, I was curious about the workmanship aspect of it, not the product itself, but.
I think we just, didn't we just some time back do a resurfacing on one of our high school? Was it Miss Stanley?
They're all kind of coming up. I know that Silver Medal coming up next.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Okay, this motion has been approved. Next on the agenda, superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that are coming up. First of all, fall athletics began today. This is the first day for practices for fall athletics. The students are excited to return. Staff, or ten-month staff, especially our teachers and our ten-month individuals, not beginning teachers, will return on August the seventeenth. Our Read to Achieve Camp does finish this Thursday. We have beginning teacher orientation. This will be at Albemarle High School on the fifteenth of August, and everyone, of course, is invited to come. Letters training will begin in three weeks. The open house dates, the high school open houses are the twenty-third of August. Middle school's the twenty-fourth, and the elementary is the twenty-fifth, and on the twenty-ninth, of course, is the first day of school. And as you alluded to earlier, there was a change in general statute that there is no longer, you don't have to vote on masks on a monthly basis anymore. So that's why you didn't see it in this consent agenda. They didn't make that change in the general statute. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you referenced that about the mask. I figured there might be some in the audience waiting to hear us say mask optional or something, so at least we don't even have to worry about it anymore. I'll start with you, Mr. Sorenson, please. Board member comments?
I ask you for trouble tonight, aren't you?
I am.
Okay, start out with, congratulate Mr. Caleb. I've done some pretty cool things. Got to hear my own name as a coach, state champion twice, but I can't even imagine being a medalist at a national level. I mean, that kind of blows my mind there. Couple of other things we'd like to hit on. Want to welcome Ms. Wood to our central office. We've interacted for thirty minutes. I've already got a really good feeling that she's going to be a huge asset. I do want to say thank you to our Stanley County Board of Commissioners for two different things. The budget, they helped us out with the budget. People don't realize, but when the state mandates raises and stuff like that, it costs the county as well. We have to come up with contributions to the retirement system, some other things like that. And the North Carolina General Assembly put us in a bind, and our county commission came through for us. Grateful for that. They did that without a tax raise or a tax increase, being a rural county with a pretty good population, people on fixed income. That's an accomplishment. I also want to sow my appreciation to Bill Lohon and the county commission for the resolution concerning the Title IX abuses being sent down from DC. They've been shut down by the courts for right now, but we have, we have a problem in this country with people trying to force an agenda that's going to hurt every child. And the fact that our county commissioners basically said niente, or we don't support that was a great thing. Talking about the funding for the schools, people don't realize how bad it is in North Carolina, but what's really happening is, everybody in his rooms, property taxes are going to go up. They're going to have to go up, because every year, the state changes the formula, and they change the amount of funding that they send downstream to us while maintaining the same requirements of the counties. So eventually, you reach a point where, to meet the constitutional obligation to provide a free and equitable education, the county's going to have to raise taxes. That's a direct indictment of Carl Ford, our state senator. It's a direct indictment of Wayne Sasser, our state rep. Those people in Raleigh need to get their heads out of their backsides and stop doing what they're doing. We were ranked by edweek.org forty-seventh in the USA for public school funding again. They give a letter grade to, Edweek is a think tank that does criteria-based rankings for the state school systems. For the, I don't know, the thirtieth, twentieth, thirtieth year, our public school funding got an F. Our student achievement in North Carolina got a C. What that tells me is our teachers and our administrators and our local school systems are overachieving. We're paying for a hamburger, and we're getting champagne and caviar, so I just want to bring that up real quick. Last thing we'll talk about is sometimes life and fiction are similar. You know, they talk about how sometimes, you know, the truth is stranger than fiction. Most people don't know it, but a superhero died here in Stanley County not long ago. A superhero named Iron Man, Avante, he was just the coolest kid in the world. I bring it up because I did something I don't do. I don't attend funerals for children because I just lose it. I can't handle it. But I did go to his funeral because I'd met the boy. And he was just the sweetest, most caring and nicest kid I've ever met. And he was a huge fan of Iron Man. He actually got some signed Iron Man photographs from Robert Downey Jr. The support from East Albemarle High School there blew me away. At the send-off for this little hero, this amazing little kid. And just like in the comics, when a superhero dies, there's no doubt in my mind that Stanley County's Iron Man has been reborn.
Thank you for those touching words there, Mr. Sorenson. Ms. Watson?
I also would like to congratulate again Caleb. He was a sweet young man. I know it's hard for people to think that people can do things like that, but we've got one here, so we're proud of that. I also want to welcome Ms. Wood. Glad to have you. And this starts a new year, and I hope that all of our children will be happy to return. I know my granddaughter is. So I just hope we have a really, really good year, and good things happening in state and county schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Ms. Poplin?
I would like to start off by congratulating Caleb on his three silver medals. And I've had the unique opportunity to be able to have my son swim alongside Caleb for years now. Caleb is a delight to be around. The things that were mentioned about him in the letter, he is always cheering on his companions and rooting for his team, and he gets very serious about those times at some point in times. But I just want to congratulate him. That's a huge accomplishment for a Special Olympic swimmer to make it to that level. So congratulations, Caleb, and to his coaches. It takes a lot of dedication. Those guys don't get paid to do that. That's a, you know, there's no big bucks in that. So thank you, Joel, and all the others that helped with that program. I would also like to welcome Ms. Wood. Nice to get to know you tonight, and we're glad you're here. And I just wanted to mention that I did attend my first legislative committee at the NCSBA last week, and I'm looking forward to working. There's a lot of great minds in that room, and trying to get some legislation pushed through for our schools, so look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. I knew you would enjoy serving on that committee. Mr. Graves?
Thank you. And also, thank you, Ms. Poplin, for reaching out to the board members to see if there was anything you wanted us to have you ask on our behalf or pay attention to. So I appreciate that very much. And I want to congratulate Caleb, too. I saw it in the newspaper. It was on the front page, as it should have been, when he won those medals. And I saw it for the first time when I got the paper that morning. And, I mean, it is, it's absolutely impressive. We have a lot of, we're blessed with an abundance of very talented students and athletes academically and athletically here with All-State, number one in the state of North Carolina. But to win three medals, silver medals, at a national level is a huge accomplishment. It's as big as making it to an NFL team or any professional sports team. It's absolutely unbelievable. So I was very happy for him and excited for Stanley County. I want to just very quickly reiterate and reinforce what Mr. Sorenson said about funding. We can't talk about this enough. The school system and the school systems in the state of North Carolina are in a funding crisis at the state level. I don't know how to, it's a crisis. On top of that, we have COVID. And so if the situation was normal and we were getting the funding, we, Stanley County and other counties within the state were getting the proper amount of funding, then we would go back to the state and say, we need some help to get through this COVID situation, because the children are struggling, the teachers, the faculty, the staff, everyone is struggling. And we are having difficulty, like every other county, but we're having difficulty attracting and retaining staff. And the county needs to be prepared for what happens when we don't have people to fill these classrooms, qualified, competent teachers, assistants, and professional staff across the board from our bus drivers. Students are going to have substitutes, if we're lucky, that are going to be in their classroom, that may not be qualified to teach them in the subject that they're in. We are likely going to be put in that position. We're already struggling, the superintendent, the entire staff in the central office is struggling trying to fill these vacancies, and it's only going to get worse. So I don't have an answer right now, but I know a lot of people out there are thinking about it in the community, and I appreciate you reaching out to me and asking me about it and what you can do. But we're going to have to come together in Stanley County, and we are going to have to talk to the elected officials. And I mentioned this two years ago, and I'm going to mention it again. If it wasn't for these unfunded mandates coming down from the state, and you will hear our elected officials at the state level scream bloody murder when the federal government hands down unfunded mandates to the state. They campaign on it, they raise money on it, and they scream about big government in Washington. But nobody at the state says one word when they hand unfunded mandates down to the county commissioners. And the county commissioners, like Mr. Sorenson said, are going to have to go to the taxpayers to raise the money to fill the gaps that had previously been funded by the state. And why do we fund it at the state level? Because we all share the burden equally, or at least we should. And that commitment to the local, to education in North Carolina has just been, there is no commitment anymore. And I hate it for everybody that's in this profession that you're having to deal with this, but we are certainly grateful for all the hard work and effort that you're putting in on behalf of educating the children of Stanley County. It's not good. I don't know how else to say it. I wish the papers were right about it. They're not. They're not. Everybody's ignoring this, and we're going to get to the point where we can't ignore it anymore. I did want to thank the public speakers real quick. I'm going to shift to this. I want to thank you for coming out. The Board hears every speaker loud and clear. I said this in a previous school board meeting. All the board members are aware of any situation that is spoken about publicly. But I want to just let everyone know, remind everyone, as board members, first of all, we all act as a body. We don't act individually. The second thing is, we are prohibited by law from speaking about any issue, personnel or student-related. That is just a fact. So our hands are often tied. Even the school system's hands can be tied. But individuals that are employed by Stanley County Schools and attend Stanley County Schools and their families, everyone has rights, and there are processes that you have to go through. The only thing I'm going to say is that I am fully aware of all the situations that are out there. I'm following them closely. I can't make any other comments other than that. But I think the, and the entire Board is aware of all the situations that are going on out there. And with that, I'm going to conclude. Thank you.
I would like to also recognize the Special Olympian
I would like to also recognize the Special Olympian. It's not just him, it's the whole community. It's, it's his family, it's all of his peers, it's everybody. When somebody makes the Olympics, that is wonderful, but when a child, a student, a man like him does what he's done, it's really special because he has to do more than, quote, "the average person." He is special. That's why they call it Special Olympics, and he has achieved, that's what we say, everybody can achieve, and he has achieved, and we're all really proud of him. Another thing is the public comments. Thank you for all the comments. Like Mr. Graves said, we listen to everybody, we hear what they say, we know what's going on, we discuss it, and we do, as a group, we make these decisions. It's not one person that runs the boat. Everybody does. Another thing is, it was great to have the sheriff here tonight because with Uvalde, that was a terrible situation, and when you look and see what happened, it had been a long time since they had had any practice or exercise. And before this happened, Ms. Flo had been doing these exercises and these practices, and now we're doing even more. And it makes you feel good. I mean, we ask them all the time, are all the doors locked? Yes, they are. And it's great they're getting these body scanners so we can make our schools the safest they can be. And thanks, every, I'm looking forward to the new school year because it looks like it's gonna be special. COVID is, has died down now. Our students are back, our teachers are back, everybody's ready to go, and we're looking forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Levler. Starting the school year, I think we have coming up Saturday, Back to School Bash. Okay, I think that's held at the YMCA. So I know, looking forward to that, and children are looking forward to it. I can echo what people have said, certainly congratulations to Caleb Wilson, and thank you, Dr. Dennis, for getting this recognition in, in place for us tonight. I think everyone here really appreciated that. Welcome, Ms. Wood. I think everybody now has welcomed you. To our audience, thank you for being here. Our county office staff, who are always here, thank you for always being in attendance. And then I just want to wish our students, parents, teachers, staff, all staff, a wonderful start to the school year. I always say, I used to work under an administrator that said, the start of the school year is when the magic begins. So I always kept that in my mind, tried to keep that magic going all, all year long. The date and time for our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Tuesday, September the 6th, 2022, at Central Elementary School Auditorium. It will begin at 6:15. I don't think we need to go back into closed session. We do have a work session, board members, this Friday. I believe it starts at nine. We go until. We have a lot on the agenda, so I will see you all there. Okay, one comment.
Mr. Graves and the rest of the board, make sure you guys fill out those surveys that rank the funding situation that you were speaking about, so we can lobby for those.
Okay, we're not going back into closed session. I think next is...
Can I ask a procedural question real quick about the meeting schedule? So normally, that's my understanding, that we'll typically move to another location if the county commissioners are using this facility. Is that correct?
Right.
Does Albemarle City Council meet the same night? Do they normally meet the same night as the county commissioners?
They meet on Monday nights.
They, now, but they won't be able to either because of the holiday Labor Day, probably.
I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay, I, I was just wondering, because the only thing I'd like to do is, is request that we are able to stream the meeting like we do here. It's like we always sort of get kicked out to the remote locations and we can't stream, so people don't have the benefit of being able to watch remotely like they normally would. So, thanks.
And you can consider that, Dr. Dennis? Because I think they're...
We could probably use a polycom and get it. It might be a slightly different streaming option, like Facebook lockers.
Okay. Because we will have recognitions that night. That's gonna be our retiree recognition, so there will be a lot. Anything else? The next on the agenda is Personnel Administration, Student Services. I'm going to turn this over to you, Ms. Wood.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd like to draw your attention to the updated personnel agenda that was at your seats with additions made in red. Section one requires no action and includes the most recent updates. Section two does require action, and I would entertain a vote at this time.
I make a motion, we approve section two, as submitted. Oh, with amendments.
Okay. Okay, so we are approving, a motion to approve section two with amendments that were made. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Poplin and Ms. Watson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, that has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Okay, a motion by Dr. Levler, a second by Mr. Graves. All in favor say aye. Oppose, no. We are adjourned.